Would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Thank you, Ellen. Under the public announcements, Mr. Gary, to confirm, I received a phone call today from this afternoon from Mr. Thornton asking for his item to be moved from the agenda tonight.
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. Call the public.
Robert Morris?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Robert Morris of 620 East Tielo Run South, Cape Creek. I've been a member of the Water Advisory Committee of the WAC for two years, but I'm speaking tonight only for myself and not on behalf of the committee. First and foremost, the council deserves tremendous credit for reactivating the WAC and hiring David Princehorn as utility manager. He is an exceptionally capable and effective engineer. The WAC has been instrumental in identifying problems and their solutions also. We would not even know about the problem I will speak of without council's aggressive actions to direct improved management of utilities. David and the WAC have uncovered operational problems in utility that have cost the rate payers an incredible amount of money over the last five years. Nothing illustrates this better than the water wasted by maloperation of the water treatment plant that has sent huge quantities of water through Rancho Muniata Pond and into Galloway Watch. The WAC and David Princehorn discovered this during examination of the Rancho Muniata contract and annual building. By the way, the WAC analysis found no blame for Rancho Muniata. With the Rancho Muniata aspect out of the way, let's focus on the town water operation. The water treatment plant dumped 123 million gallons of water on the ground last year alone. This is about 45,000 gallons of water per residential connection in the town. That is water that was bought from CAP, Central Arizona Project, pumped up the hill, treated, and then dumped on the ground through Galloway Watch. The water happened to go through Rancho Muniata, but that is a non-issue. The problem is the water treatment plant. Multiply last year's dumped water by five for the five years of maloperation and you get north of 500 million gallons of water dumped on the ground during an epic drought in the southwest. But what is worse is not knowing what's going on. Employees of utility doing it? How is it that for five years, knowledge of it, this was buried and unknown to council and citizens until the arrival of new leadership? Water loss percentage is one of the primary performance measurement and benchmarking scoreboards for utility operations. The town has never had a scoreboard, which is the real reason problems like water dumping go unnoticed for years. Last summer, I introduced, the WAC approved, and the council directed staff to implement this management technique, requiring an initial report by late 2014. If that scoreboard had been in place the last five years, the town could not have dumped that much water without the whole town knowing it. Unfortunately, that critical program is behind schedule. Staff did not meet the deadline for initial report. In answer to a question at last week's retreat, David Princehorn said it would start in April, about four months later. It is far behind schedule because utilities are overwhelmed with engineering work, all of which are money-saving opportunities. The WAC also recommended the town hire a permanent engineer last summer, along with the management program. When the current WAC started, there was a full-time utility manager slash engineer and a staff assistant. Now the manager time is split with Rose, and the staff assistant is the receptionist at the front desk. After a delay of six months, a part-time engineer has been added. The sum total of all this is the utility department has less capability in meeting its obligations than it had when water problems were created. I respectfully ask for enough time to finish. I'm just about done. More resources are needed at this time, not less. Here are my recommendations. First, direct staff to hire a full-time engineer. The town manager has been repeatedly advised to do so both publicly and privately. That position will pay for itself electricity and water savings. Plus, there will be an engineer and relief manager during vacations. Coincidentally, David is on vacation right now, and the work which I am working with him on daily is at a dead end standstill. The town can always cut back later, but progress is needed now. Second, ask staff to complete the scoreboard. The council directed it last summer and do it on a priority basis. In summary, dumping water is only a symptom of a faulty management system, and there are plenty of additional problems out there. This council, by starting the WAC and supporting the work of the utility manager, has started the ball rolling on addressing a treasure trove of issues, and they will save us money. Now let's get the engineering resources, build the scoreboard, and accelerate fixing the utilities. Thank you.
Tracy Vasali?
Good evening. I'm Tracy Vasali, and I am your re-elected president of Cape Creek Yesterday's for 2015 and 2016. For the first order of business, I hope you all remember that we were up for a national award with the PRCA, and I brought this plaque to show you that we made the top five finalists, Cape Creek, Arizona, for Small Rodeo of the Year, and we'll pass that around so you guys can see you can't keep this. Second order of business, I wanted to introduce you Miss Katie Gaines. She is our 2015 Cape Creek Yesterday's rodeo queen, and she'd like to say hello to you.
Hi, I'm Katie. I'm super excited to be representing the city of Cape Creek, as I got to participate in it last year and had a wonderful experience, and can't wait for this next year to be representing the wonderful city of Cape Creek and the Cape Creek Yesterday's rodeo. Yeah.
We're very excited to have Katie onboard with us, representing us for the entire rodeo season. I also have, with Robbie's help, we'd like to show you your newly designed and ready-to-fly Cape Creek Yesterday's rodeo flag. You can borrow it if you'd like for parades, but it is with a pole, it's sewn for poles and it is carried by horseback. But this is the town flag that we made for you, and thanks for your support. And finally, we have Robbie Hall here with a present for town for the 2014 Platinum sponsorship, and she has more talent than we can even imagine. She's our parade chairperson. She custom designs every single frame for Platinum-level sponsors and above. This is last year's poster with a custom frame, and she even did the standing-out veering horses for the town of Cape Creek. So Robbie, she can come up and give you guys a good look. We're going to leave it with Peter for the primo squad and the town offices. And then we also have posters for all of you to take home with you, and Bruce has just been bringing them around. These are last year's. This year's is in design, yep, no one's seen it yet. But a huge thank you for all your support, and reminder that the date's this year, March 27, 2029. The parade is the weekend before on the 21st. It's the kickoff celebration. It's new to town, it's new to all of us, and it's bigger and better. You have the parade in the morning, you have Mount Dust in the afternoon, and a kickoff celebration dance that night at the Buffalo Ship. So two full weekends of Yesterday fun for everyone. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm Robbie Hall.
Tracy, congratulations on the top five.
Thank you.
Okay, call the public.
Robbie Hall?
Thank you for having me this evening. What I wanted to just indicate is that we're very excited about the Yesterday's rodeo parade again this year. We did move it up one week, hoping to eliminate any, you know, safety issues or whatnot, and we are excited that we are getting more and more entries this year. We have an individual from the Parada Parade, she's now helping with our parade as well, but she's worked on the Fiesta Bowl Parade, she has involvement with the Super Bowl and everything else, so she has a lot of contacts, and she sent out her application to other businesses that were involved in her rodeo parade in the past, so we're excited about having that expand and be bigger and better than last year and the years prior. So we're looking forward to all of the council members and mayor, if you'd like to join us as well this year, we'll get you a wonderful ride in the parade. Last year, we have the APS fire track, but we're looking forward to March 21st at 9:00 AM to kick off the parade weekend. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak, call the public yourself?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. My name is David Smith, I'm a Cape Creek citizen, and I'd like to discuss something that I see as a true danger in Cape Creek. Now, we went through an election cycle recently where there was lots of dark money that flowed into town, into the state, and the dark money allowed the candidates to be generally congenial with each other. But on one side and on the other, there was an undercurrent of nastiness, dishonesty, lies, fabrications, what have you, trying to destruct, to destroy the other candidate. Now, Cape Creek is not the state of Arizona, and there's not a lot of dark money, true dark money, in Cape Creek. On the other hand, there is an equivalent to dark money, and it's called the Sonoran News. The Sonoran News, for the past over a year and a half, has allowed so-called guest editorialists to put forth inaccurate information, idyllic, fabrications, what have you. At least one of those guest editorialists is now running for council, and as I remember, a couple of weeks ago, he wrote a guest editorial where there was, from my knowledge, incorrect information that was provided. Now, it's not irrational for Don Sorek to support the Sorek slate. He does it with these Sonoran News. The only other forum where people can get information out is to stand up here in front of the council and the public and allow this to be put out over the internet to the citizens of Cape Creek. I don't know how many watch, I hope some do, and I hope that they consider that everything you read is not always true. Years and years ago, when I was a kid, there was something that was always on TV talking about the big lie. The big lie at that time was communism, how great it was, how it was going to solve all the world's problems. A few years before that, it was Nazism. Now, I'm not comparing the Sonoran News to the Communist Party or the Nazi Party, but they do use some of the same tactics, that is repeating things over and over and over again, so that people say, "Oh, well, there's smoke, so there probably is fire." Well, I've been involved in enough things, so I know that there's no fire there. What there is, is a group of people trying to do a good job, and if the Sonoran News wins, if Don Sorek wins, if his slate wins, it will be a very, very bad thing for the town of Cape Creek. Thank you.
While the public is still open? May the council is going to proceed. Mr. Vern Bonner, just to even invite town manager, anything from you?
Just one quick item from the mayor and vice leader, actually. We've had a number of requests to have office hours brought back, so I'm going to ask you both if you want to try to bring this back either weekly or bi-weekly, because right now we go once a month, but it's really with the mayor and vice chairman on it.
We're ready to re-initiate weekly office hours effective this Thursday.
All right, thank you.
On to consent, two items, both have to do with regular council meeting minutes, December the 1st and December 15th, both in 2014. Motion to approve. So moved to record? Moved in second, I'll lose in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? The ayes clearly counted. Thank you, council. On to the first of the general agenda items, presentation by Marilyn May CPA and Partner and Henry and Horn LLP, and town council approval of the town of Cape Creek's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending the 30th of 2014 as the official financial results. Robert, are you going to?
Yes, David, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I have with me Marilyn, she's going to be going over the audit report, and then there's a couple of slides there where there's some financial information, and I'll be contributing to the presentation on, okay? All right, so.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council, can you hear me? It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. I am a partner with Henry and Horn, and we did complete the annual financial audit of the town of Cape Creek this year, with the year ending June 30th of 2014. Next slide, please. There are, with our quality control in our firm, anytime we issue reports on any governmental entity, we have two partners approving or reviewing the work that was performed. Chuck Getmiller had some prior commitments and could not be here tonight, but he is the second partner on this audit. Next slide, please. On the town of Cape Creek, on their financials for the year, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. The financial statements are fairly prescriptive in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles, meaning that the unmodified opinion is a what? Will be called a clean opinion. We also issued a yellow book report on the financials. The yellow book report is in accordance with the government auditing standards, and what we're looking for there is, we're looking for internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance. Have we discovered any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal controls over financial reporting? We would be reporting them in that report. If there were also any material non-compliance that we discovered in our audit, we would be reporting it in that report. We did issue an unmodified opinion on it, and that means a clean opinion. We had no significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, and no instances of non-compliance. Next slide, please. The audit actually, preliminary-type work started in June, and we actually came out to do our in-depth field work in November and issued the report in December. And again, we issued the clean report, given reasonable assurance, and also on the internal controls over financial reporting. We also sent a, or issued a letter for our standards require us to communicate certain things with those that are charged with governance, and one of them would be the significant accounting policies. Your notes, number one, in your financial statements would cover any of the significant accounting policies for the town of Cape Creek. I can say that there were no new or different accounting policies that the town entered into this year that would be different than last year. In other words, the financials are comparable, we're able to compare this year's financials with last year. Any difficulties that were involved in performing the audit? We had none. The management, the town, were able to come in and get the audit work complete with no There were no uncorrected misstatements. We did not find anything that we felt like needed to be put into the financial statements that weren't already there. There were no disagreements with management. Disagreements what we would define as, they think something should be accounted for differently than what we feel it should be accounted for differently or against our standards, and we had none of those, and no other consultations with other auditors or anything like that or other accountants. Next slide, please. There is an upcoming change that you will see in your financial statements for next year. The Government Accounting Standards Board has issued another accounting pronouncement that will have an impact on your financial statements. So as I was talking earlier about you being able to compare the financial statements from one year to the next, your next year's financial statements will be different because of this accounting pronouncement. This accounting pronouncement is accounting for defined benefit pension plans, and the accounting treatment will be additional. Right now, you are part of the Arizona State Retirement System, and you're also a part of the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. Right now, the accounting for those defined benefit plans is purely disclosures in your financials. Starting next year, there is a portion of those, the defined pension plans are underfunded. So that means that there is a liability. And as a member of those defined pension plan, you will be assigned or given or assigned a, allocated a cost, and then that cost will go on to your financial statements. So you will be seeing an increased liability on your financial statement next year for that pension, for your pension share.
Could you get into that a little bit, because that is, of course, anywhere in the 200 pages I read, is the future liability of the town projecting to be what in terms of, oh?
You know, numbers will be probably coming out within the next month, but right now, I have no idea what your percentage of that pot will be, but I'm sure you're going to be hearing about it from Robert in the future, in the near future, as to what your portion of your liability is.
Thank you. Is there something we'll have to pay annually, or is it something we'll carry?
It really, it is no, I mean, your financial position this, at the end of this year, isn't any, isn't any different than next year, it's just the manner in which it's going to be disclosed. Right now, it's disclosed in the notes to your financials. Because of this accounting pronouncement, it's going to actually be put into the numbers that you're going to see in there, but it will be, it will be in your statement of net position, and it will be a decrease. Since it's underfunded, it's going to have a negative effect on your net position.
Yes, put on some antibiotics. I'll ask, why is it underfunded? Who has failed to make the payments?
No one has really failed to make the payments. There's a lot that goes into these defined benefit plans, and at one time, the Arizona State Retirement System was overfunded, and then if that ever happened, you will actually have an asset on your books. But, I mean, it's the state legislature makes the, and the state treasurers, I mean, they're the ones that's responsible for, you know, doing the estimates in the plan, setting the contribution rates and so forth. So there's this, there's an actuary report that is done, completed every single year, and so there, you know, those mathematicians do the estimates as to what the liability is. We also issued a report on the expenditure limitation report, and it was filed and issued timely. This year, there was no single audit, that means a single audit is when you actually receive federal funding, federal dollars. You would be required to have an audit on those federal dollars if you receive in total $500,000 or more. The threshold is going to be increasing to, I think, 750 in the future, but if you, once you hit that threshold of federal dollars coming into the town, then you will fall under what we call a single audit, and we would be auditing those federal dollars. This year, you had less than that, so it did not require a single audit. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Marilyn. I just wanted to point out some highlights of the fiscal year 2014 financial results, and you can see our assets remained relatively the same as the prior year, parade being the current year, parade being the prior year. Our liabilities actually went down quite a bit, and our overall net position went up. This is a result of, as you can see, the revenues being slightly higher than prior year, while the expenditures remained roughly the same. year, while the expenditures remained roughly the same. Next slide. And so this, this slide just compares our fund balance from one year to the next. And it's all governmental funds and the general fund. Um, as you can see, going from twelve to thirteen to fourteen, sorry. Um, it, it's increased each year, twelve to thirteen, thirteen to fourteen. So our overall governmental fund balance and general fund balance has increased each year. Uh, I was asked a question earlier about cash position. Our, uh, current cash position is estimated to be about seven point seven million, comparing it to our June thirtieth cash position of ten point eight million. The difference is really the, the, uh, debt service payment that came out July, uh, first. Um, and, uh, if I account for that, uh, it'd be about six point eight million as of June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, compared to seven point seven million that we have right now. So, uh, we're, we're well on our way to, um, establishing enough cash to make our debt service payments and to have everything that we need as far as, uh, our cash requirements, so. Any questions? Any questions?
Not a question, just, you know, on this other matter of the election, my feeling, you'll reach council as soon as possible. Robert, please.
Yes, I'll, I'll be willing to share the report as soon as I get one. Uh, the, the ASRS is a, a system that, uh, has never, uh, had to, because it's, it's everyone in, in the same pot. Uh, it, it's not broken out by individual employee or by individual member. So it's just a matter of breaking out, uh, the total based on the, the employees that we have. And so they're, they're doing that for us so that they can, so we can have a number that's just for our organization. PSPRs is a little bit different. They keep each plan separate, each, each, uh, member of the plan separate. So you kind of have an idea where it's going. Uh, I think there was a change in two on how that amount was calculated in the Gatsby versus the numbers that the, uh, retirement system had traditionally used. So that change too is, uh, is why, um, it's taken a little bit longer to get that integration. So.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Brimble. But Mayor, I have a question, I think may help address some of the concerns of the retirement programs. The question is this, if there's a state retirement fund shortfall or unfunded liability, my correct, what the state then does is increase the contribution rate for the town. Assuming the answer to that is yes, I want to point out, Mayor, in response to your question, the town's contribution rate has increased every year in recent years anyway, and the actual numbers are reflected in note twelve, the financial statements. My book is on page, like, one hundred, but page fifty-seven of the report, but it's note twelve in the financials.
I just want to add to that, to let everyone know that the retirement systems managed, as Marilyn indicated by the state, and the town is no way, has any control over, uh, its funded position or unfunded position, um, or the rate of contribution the employer is required to make. All that's handled by the state. Uh, I, I do want to let people know too that, that the last three years, the funded position of the Aras, at least the Arizona State Retirement System, has gone up a couple of points. And this last year's returns were about eighteen point nine percent. Um, that's all found on the website, uh, so you can see that they're improving. Uh, and, uh, this year, July one, the employer's contribution rate will go down for the first time in five years. So, uh, they're also, you know, they look at a five-year average, uh, they, they smooth out the calculation, so, uh, sudden changes in revenues or decreases don't normally, don't always get reflected right away in the contribution rate. It takes a little while for it to have its full effect. So that way, they're not always, there's no huge increase or decrease this year.
A hundred and fifty-seven, did you say, Mr. Brimble?
Fifty-seven.
Please proceed. Well, I must have goofed off.
Are there any more questions?
Yes, Mr. Brimble. Page fifty-two talks about the restricted covenant that, uh, the principal loan, the Desert Hills Water System, debt service coverage ratio wasn't covered last year. That's June, uh, the end of, uh, June.
Desert Hills Water System has a net system, I'm sorry, council member, mayor, council member, sorry. Uh, the, the Desert Hills Water System has a, um, net system operating revenue coverage requirement of a hundred and twenty percent of the debt service payment. It did not meet that coverage requirement. We are, with us aware of the issue, and we are, um, discussing changing the, the reserve requirements. Uh, I know at this time, they do not have our loans, um, pledged in terms of, uh, the related, or bondholders', um, uh, in, in debt and sort of, beam up the, borrowers are not depending on us, basically. So, uh, this is really, I would as, uh, die for saying it in terms of the risk. Um, and they, they will come forward, uh, eventually, meet with us to discuss changing the debt service covenant to where it's excise tax, uh, it's an excise tax pledge, similar to the split that we did earlier, uh, that was here. Who split the, uh, the Cape Creek water system, uh, the major loan there from one loan to two loans, one with a debt service, or excise tax pledge, and one with a net system operating revenue requirement?
But we're still waiting for them to come back for stuff.
Yes, they, they, uh, that's right. They asked, they, they said that's probably what we'll do, uh, and I'm just waiting to hear that from them.
Would you like to continue?
Any additional questions?
Any additional questions, public, tell them. Okay, we will go to public comment on agenda room one.
I have no speakers.
Yes.
Excuse me. Harry Smith, Cape Creek resident, mayor, vice mayor, council. I found myself a bit confused on the issue of the underfunding of defined benefit plans. I just wanted to make sure I understand what was said. They're underfunded. The responsibility for establishing the payments to fund them rests with the state to set up the scheme. But next year, it will appear that the responsibility for the underfunding rests with the town because it will appear as an increased liability to the town. That doesn't seem to make sense to me. It would seem to me that if the town has a liability, then they ought to have some control over how much they fund it or don't fund it, or the liability rests with the state. I must be misunderstanding something about the accounting principles. If the state has the responsibility to manage the fund and to set the terms that the town makes payments for it, wouldn't that liability rest with the state or be shared in some way? That's my first question.
Is there a compelling statute, Mr. Brimble, that you know?
No, Mayor, but I believe the answer to, to the question is, it's not different than any other circumstance where you have a liability that is shared at entity level and is allocated to the various sub-entities. That's what I understand happens in the state. There's a statewide system liability that is paid by each of the participants, cities or individuals. The change in the accounting standard now says, will say, that you don't just reflect the payment liability in the notes to the financial statements. You now put them up in the text, and you show them as a liability of the town to the extent that is allocated to the town. I think these folks are trying to be very careful. I think what they want to say, accountants can't say it this way, is nothing's changed. It's exact, you're in exactly the same position you're in today, but instead of showing this liability on a footnote described by contribution, it is now going to be shown on the town's, the text of the financial statement as a liability to town. Operationally, I think it's fair to say, I hope it's fair to say, that nothing changes. Hope that happens.
So, that means that the town doesn't have any more liability than it otherwise had. It simply appears in a different position on the financial statement?
Yes. And, and you did raise another very good question, which is, well, what happens if the town does not want to participate in the state retirement system? And the answer to that is, we need to go to the state legislature and convince them that all cities and towns within the state are not required to participate in the system. So you asked a very good question, which is, couldn't we manage this ourselves? And the answer is no, not under the existing statutory scheme.
So there is an existing statute, we're compelled by statute.
I can't quote it to you, Mayor, but I'm quite confident that there's either statutes or regulations that define the level of contributions by municipal authorities in the state retirement system.
I have a second question, if that's all right, Mayor.
Yes.
Which relates to the Desert Hills debt service issue that Councilman Spitzer raised. I was also not clear about that. Is the debt the responsibility of the town? I assume it is, because he manages the water system. So doesn't the town then have a role in deciding what the size of the reserve would be to manage that debt? No?
No, it, it's a, I'm sorry. But by debt covenant, we, we mean contractually, we agree with, with them to provide this level of coverage, uh, whether it be for the, uh, the, the revenue pledge, or for the debt service reserve, or for the repair and replacement reserve. Those are all, we're all, we are contractually bound to provide those, those amounts.
Mayor stated differently, the town did have a role. That's what you're asking.
We did have.
That's what I was asking. But the town signed a contract, and the one point two debt coverage is now contracted.
Thank you.
Public comment is still open? If there is no other public comment, I'm going to come back to council for a motion.
Motion to approve the comprehensive annual financial report as the official financial results for the county of Cape Creek for the fiscal year 2014. So. I just want to thank, uh, Mr. Weddington and, uh, our service provider for coming forward this evening and giving this presentation. I know we decided to make the presentation of the annual audit, uh, public for the first time last year, and I think it helped everybody have a better understanding of the town's financial conditions, so I appreciate that.
Councilman McGuire, did you have a second?
Uh, yes. Thank you for a thoughtful and well-presented, uh, picture of the financial state of the town.
On the state retirement, I just got one thing to say to people. Governor Scott Walker fixed it in his state. Maybe we can do something like that in Arizona. Two hundred pages made wonderful midnight reading. Carrie, the role, please.
Councilman Durkin?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Spitzer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Trink?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilman Manicino?
Yes.
Mayor Fancy?
Yes. Motion clearly passed. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Agenda number two, presentation by Mark Stapp, managing partner of the Haba Springs Department of Establishment and Establishment, establishing a Haba Springs Utility District. This is a presentation only item, council is taking no voting action.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Um, I've been able to cite, I think, two songs that are applicable to this project. Uh, one of them is the Beatles' Long and Winding Road, and I think it applies literally and figuratively to the Haba Springs project. The other is the Grateful Dead, Keep On Truckin', This is a Long Strange Trip. Um, I'm here before you, uh, to discuss the, uh, the proposal to create the Haba Springs Utility District, which is, under state statute, something that you have the, uh, authority to allow happen. Um, there are several different forms of district, and what I wanted to do with this presentation is briefly give you a rationale as to what we would like to do, um, and provide you with some information as to, uh, the extent of this utility district. In years past, this is not something that the town has chose to implement. And when this project began, uh, which was many years ago, this was not, uh, or was a very new mechanism made available for financing infrastructure, public infrastructure to support major projects. Um, this is a very different time than when we started this project. Uh, some of you are on the council, some of you are not on the council. When we brought this project forward, and we began to work on this in two thousand. Uh, but ownership of this land and the intent to pursue development of this started many, many years before that. And the recession caused us to pause, uh, just like it caused many people to pause. I think one of the differences is that we did not lose our focus. We have not abandoned the project. We have not changed the concept, and we have maintained our desire to pursue this project which the town had unanimously approved, um, back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, when the, uh, the, uh, pre-adoption and development agreement were approved and the plots were reported. We've simply had to take a pause, but the world's a very different place today than it was in two thousand and six, when we really started, um, to pursue physical development of this project. Um, we call this the proposed Haba Springs Utility District. It is a particular form of district that we're asking your permission to have formed, and it's called a revitalization district. Um, I'm going to leave the statutory and legal authority to do this to both the town council, who has probably as much, if not more, experience doing this as anybody, um, except perhaps the gentleman who wrote this statute which allows us to happen in the town of Cape Creek precedent, Mr. Steve Fats, who is here and has significant amounts of experience with this as well. Both of them can tell you both the legal authority and the mechanisms for creating the district. Can I change the slide? Um, this sets out the statutory authority that you have, um, and the amendments which allow us to pursue this revitalization district. Um, and I'm not going to go through those in detail. Uh, but basically, what these allow is for us to finance public infrastructure, uh, to support large-scale development. And I think one of the reasons this town has not seen this kind of financing proposal brought forward by the development community in the past is you typically have not had large-scale development of this magnitude. This is a thousand acre project, I think it's fair to say it was the largest development project proposed in the town of Cape Creek, or we did, and I think it still is. And so it has a slightly different status than maybe other developments had been passed. Um, the, the environment within which we exist with financing these kinds of projects, as I said earlier, is very different. And this is a mechanism that allows us to pursue the development and complete the work that we began in two thousand and seven by issuing thirty-year bonds that are secured only by our land. And unlike some other forms of utility district, this particular district impacts only our property and does not impact either the town, the town's balance sheet, does not require governance by the town or involve them in the governance, nor does it involve any liability on the part of anyone receiving service. The environment within which we exist with financing these kinds of projects, as I said earlier, is very different, and this is a mechanism that allows us to pursue the development and complete the work that we began in 2007 by issuing thirty-year bonds that are secured only by our land. And unlike some other forms of utility district, this particular district impacts only our property and does not impact either the town, the town's balance sheet, does not require governance by the town or involve them in governance, nor does it involve any liability on the part of anyone receiving service, except for the lands and the lots and the future bidders of homes or lots within Haba Springs. Have the next slide, please. There are various forms, improvement districts, community facilities district, and what we're proposing, which is a revitalization district. And this chart very briefly explains the kinds of development or work that can be financed by the various forms of utility districts. And again, I'm not going to run through this in detail. We provided the council with what we would call frequentlyest questions regarding these districts, and we provided the town with our proposed financing plan, and happy to answer questions about this in detail, as I'm sure your council can as well. And if there are people in the audience that want copies of this, we brought extra copies as well for people's sake. Have the next slide, please. So, the benefits of the revitalization district are several. It's going to allow construction of the facilities that support not only Haba Springs, but the residents along the route of these improvements. It will accelerate the construction schedule. We began construction of the waterline and the road improvements and the drainage improvements in 2007 and stopped because of the economy. This will allow us to begin construction of them as soon as these bonds are issued. In working with our bond council and talking to our investment bank, we understand that if given the authority to create this district, we could issue these bonds likely by June and begin construction by June or July, and that's our intent. That would allow us to finish the work which we began, which operationalizes the twelve-inch waterline, which is now begun, is connected at Joy Ranch Road and Twenty-Sixth Street, extends north to Saddle Mountain, Saddle Mountain about two-thirds of the way to Thirty-Second Street, which has been truncated. It has economic benefits, I think, for the town in several forms. One of them is, this kind of development facilitates responsible, pay-as-you-go development, which provides infrastructure to the town so that it can recognize other kinds of economic development and improve the quality of the environment for all of those who are associated with those improvements. As I said, it is pay-as-you-go growth, and that was the purpose of this, and I think Mr. Betts could probably speak more directly to some of the rationale behind this audience. And, as I mentioned previously, there's no town contingent liability. There are certain improvement districts where the town ends up acting as the board and responsible for these improvements. The revitalization district does not do that in this case. Next slide, please. The proposed district is the boundaries of the free simple land that is owned by Haba Springs Development Corporation. It is about seven hundred and forty-two acres. It is the land that remains after the land provided for open space to the town, both the hundred and thirty acres and the seventy-nine acres that have previously been beaded to the town. Next slide, please. You'll recall, for those in the audience and some of the council members possibly, that Haba Springs sits between both Fort Frost Ranch and New Creek Recreation Area and a critical spot to help create a land bridge between those two conservation areas. And, we are surrounded by state trust lands, and so this piece was a nexus to help connect those two major regional recreation areas. And our intention with this revitalization district is to, as I mentioned previously, accelerate the development and continue the work which we began. We're not asking to change our plans, we're not asking to have any contribution from the town, this is merely a mechanism for us to move quickly in a financially responsible manner. Next slide, please. This is the plan for the district. As you are probably aware, this piece of property has been fully vested with the development agreement with the town, which was extended about a year and a half ago. It has five phases, which have all been plotted, and those plots have been recorded. It came before you a short while ago, and mending, the plots for what was phase one and phase two. We will record those as soon as we can report within the calendar. Next slide, please. What's difficult to see in the slides, too, because of the lighting, is the service area for this district. Although the district, which is encumbered financially, is the seven hundred plus or minus acres of land that is the free simple land owned by Haba Springs Corporation, the service area actually extends all the way down to Joy Ranch Road, and it is all of the land that would be served by that waterline and the dry utilities that are in the right-of-way that we've constructed already, and will continue to construct from its terminus on Saddle Mountain, over to Thirty-Second Street, Thirty-Second Street, the Rockaway Hills, Rockaway Hills into the property, north along Thirty-Second Street alignment, to the terminus at Honda Bow and Thirty-Second Street, where we construct about a three hundred and twenty-five-thousand gallon storage tank, booster pump, all the telemetry necessary to operate that system. When we are completed with that waterline, the tank, all of the system, and all of the roadway improvements, and drainage facilities, including bridges and ducts, drainage ways, that will all be turned over to the town as would normally be done, with improvements made within the town right of way to the public improvements. Next slide, please. So, major infrastructure that we will construct is completion of the twelve-inch waterline that we began, as I mentioned before, a booster pump station, which would be constructed on Saddle Mountain Road, the water storage tank and all related equipment facilities, complete the bridge structures over Patchy Spring Wash and Saddle Mountain and Thirty-Second Street, complete all roadway improvements on Saddle Mountain and Thirty-Second Street, landscaping on Saddle Mountain, Thirty-Second Street, Rockaway Hills, install underground electric lines on Twenty-Sixth Street and Joy Ranch Road, the Thirty-Second Street and Honda Bow, and acquisition of additional right-of-way on Saddle Mountain to widen the right-of-way to the eighty feet that's requested by the town. Next slide, if you can maybe, on this schedule. We're here before you today as a discussion item. We would like to see the town authorize staff pursuant to the statute to work with us to create this district. The statute has a number of steps which we must comply with, including additional public hearings to bring before you the financial plan and give the residents of the town an opportunity to comment further. If we can begin this work now, given what the statutory requirements are, given what we are told by our bond council and our bank, that we should be able to begin construction sometime in the June or July time period, and have this infrastructure completed about December of 2015. So, our intention is to accelerate this work through this mechanism. Next slide, please. The amount of work to be done is substantial, which is why we are interested in pursuing this mechanism to finance this public infrastructure. All in, we will expend approximately twenty million dollars to complete all of these improvements. Some of these improvements have been begun, some of them still need to be begun, completed. There's about fifteen million dollars of additional work which we need to do. This utility district would finance approximately twenty million dollars, some of it reimbursing for work that's already been done, some of it paying for the work still to be done. And I think that is my last slide, and I will leave this for questions from the other.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Stapp, thank you. I only have one question, and I hope that you can address it, and then it can become a non-issue. I understand the funding mechanism, and that there's no liability to the town, and it seems like a net gain to the community particularly, in light of fact that it will have benefits for residents beyond those who will eventually live at the subject property. The concern that I have is that you're talking about financing twenty million dollars worth of improvements in utility infrastructure that will then be given over to the town. I assume then it will be the town's responsibility to operate and maintain those improvements, and the concern comes about that obviously the funding of that maintenance and whatever you know, repairs and upkeep is required, will come from the residential development that occurs there, you know, increased economic activity, et cetera, fees generated, what have you. My concern is, from the time that the improvements are complete to the time when your project is activated, there may be maintenance responsibilities that come onto account that impacts our budget, and at this point in time, we're spending a lot of money to maintain our existing utility infrastructure, and we're struggling with it quite frankly, not necessarily financially, we're probably going to make improvements through service and manpower and house to accommodate it. How will that work?
Well, I think there's a couple of things, Vice Mayor Trank. One of them is, this is a normal process. So, the development of this project, we would seek financing for other, through other mechanisms if the town does not want us, or does not allow us to pursue this revitalization district. What happens with those improvements is no difference whether it's this revitalization district or we finance it through some other mechanism. These all come with warranty periods. So, as you're well aware, the facilities have to be accepted by the town. So, the plans are approved by the town engineer, we've been working very closely with the town engineer, with Mr. Princehorn, to ensure that these are designed, plans and specs that the town would want the system to be built to. There are warranty periods of utilities, these are normal, and that will cover some of this time period as well. I think the other thing to point out is that in discussions with Mr. Princehorn, there are certain aspects of your existing system south of Joy Ranch Road, we should be able to help you fix through this district as well, and that is our intention, which creates a better, more efficiently operating system for you. We've had those discussions, they can be included in the cost of this district.
So, there's a follow-up question, and maybe this is for you. Is it incumbent upon us then to accept responsibility for those improvements prior to the build-out of the development under this framework?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Trank. Generally speaking, no, it's not incumbent upon you, but I think the answer to both of your questions, I'm pretty sure Mr. Stapp and Mr. Betts would agree with this, I'm pretty sure Mr. Stapp and Mr. Betts don't particularly like this, but the answer to your question is, you can or acquire the establishment of operating reserves within the district or even outside the district to protect the town from all kinds of bad events that can occur of the type you are talking about. You can require credit enhancement, so that there's a bond, a maturity, you can require cash reserve, you can require cash reserves that must be held at least to some point in the future, because, for example, in this project, and there's nothing wrong with this, but the developer has, according to their data, some five million dollars plus in sunk costs. One of the reasons developers like bonding through districts is that they can get the cash and pay themselves back. You can structure the deal in such a way that the money does not start flowing out to the developer until such time as your protection period has passed, where your credit enhancement or operating expense protection is funded. So, it's way beyond tonight's discussion, but there are ways that you can address the types of questions that you've asked, the very good questions.
So, I probably spoke too soon, and I said it would be a non-issue, but at least we can be covered, and so I think that's, I think it's a good idea.
I will assure you, Vice Mayor, and my friend, Mr. Stapp, it'll be an issue. But, it's one that is addressed commonly, and I have no expectation of that.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Trank, I will never argue with your council. I think that's a normal customary approach for this, and it does not concern us at all. In fact, I think what we need to do is determine, and this is easy to do because there are mechanisms for doing this, is determine normal customary reserves by doing some reserve analysis for what could go wrong with those various systems, and reserve that amount of cash. That's the easiest thing to do for a period of time. We've done that before in other projects, that's not a big concern.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I do have a related question. It's a good, I guess I'll alert you. And I do not know the answer to this. Improvement districts are often disfavored because the town is the ultimate oblador. Community facility districts are therefore the form of art that people tend to use today, and there are many of them around. Revitalization district is a very new piece, it was, and Mr. Betts can correct me if I'm wrong, was originally conceptualized to allow Scottsdale in conjunction with the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian community to try to redevelop a motor mile along McDowell, and then ultimately it didn't proceed, they didn't do it. That was all an introduction. Question is, has anybody done a revitalization district in Arizona, because I don't know any that are in place? Doesn't matter, we could be the first, but I am interested in learning what the history has been since the statute was passed recently and amended, I think, in 2011. So, it's a really new statute. Mark or Steve perhaps can tell us about that?
So, Mr. Mayor, council members, if I could ask your resident and my good friend, Mr. Betts, who's the author of this, to possibly jump in here for a second. He says, yeah, great, thanks.
Do you want me to jump in just on this, or do you want me to?
Jump in, come on up here.
Don't be shy, Mr. Betts. Yes. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Gary, nice to see you again. I'm Steve Betts, 5015 East Rockaway Hills, drive in Cape Creek, and just to be clear, by the way, I have no dog in this hunt, I am not at all, have no interest in caring or otherwise to this project. You're really as resourceful to the town. I just happen to be a bit of an expert in this area, and when I heard about this and I talked to the mayor, I said I would show up and provide whatever assistance I could provide on this. So, my background, I was the former CEO of Seven Core Development Company before that, I was a lawyer and attorney, and I had the opportunity back in 1988 to write the Community Facilities District Act, which this is a sort of, just a little hybrid of it, to be honest, they just took it and tweaked it just a tad bit to make this revitalization district, and they came to me and brought it to me. I try not to be a lawyer anymore, I claim not to be a lawyer, and I took that hat off years and years ago, but I sat with the city of Scottsdale folks and helped them put this together. But, and just to be clear, let me make a couple of quick points, just big picture points about this, and Mark made these points, but from a town resident perspective. What these are really good for, and Mark kind of made this point, is, what these are good for is, if we have a project that's relatively large, it needs a lot of investment, it needs a lot of streets, water, sewer drainage, and we want to make sure it's good quality stuff to put in, and we, of course, we, the town, we don't want to put that stuff in for developer, and we don't have the money for that, and there aren't many developers right now that have a lot of resources, and a lot of banks that are looking to put in a lot of stuff like that, so you don't see a lot of large-scale projects happening anymore in this, what I call, the new, new economy. And so, what this is good for is a way to access some finance, ask some funding, to get some good quality infrastructure put in the ground for these kind of large-scale projects, but then it gets given to us, given to the town, we get it, and so this is only for public infrastructure, it's only for public improvements that comes to us. Very good question, though, from the Vice Mayor, about making sure that we know what we're getting, we're getting good quality stuff with warranty, and we get it with making sure that we're not getting a pig and poke in terms of maintenance and that kind of thing, and your attorney is absolutely right, there are ways to make sure that we bridge those gaps, but the one thing that I think you all maybe skipped over a little bit, and it is in this proposal that they've written up, is there is the option to do a thirty-cent-per-hundred O and M, and I think they are proposing to do the thirty cent per, and I think that's And I think they are proposing to do the thirty cent per, and I think that thirty cent could also get you through that gap period a little bit, an operation and maintenance fee that goes with this. And so, that might help a little bit to get you through that period. So, there are ways of doing it, but the bottom line on this is it's just, it's just a way of accessing some lower-priced financing to put in infrastructure. It doesn't build the houses, it doesn't build any of the private stuff. It's just for public infrastructure, but then it gets given to the town. And so, it's a good thing to access and the other key that Gary already pointed out and marked it too, the real difference between this and other kinds of improvement district statutes is the town has no liability. I, as one of your citizens, I don't have any liability. We don't have, your budget that you were talking about, we don't get hit on this because we don't continually back these, we don't take any, any liability from them. So, and that's the way they were structured back in 1988, that's the way they've been playing out in the last 25 years. And my company, Suncor, we didn't just do them here, we did several, almost a dozen of them in Arizona, but we did them all over the West. We had, we had projects in five different states throughout the West and we did these forms of districts in different states throughout the West. And they were very popular for that reason is that it was a way of accessing less expensive infrastructure financing that you could give them to your governmental entity, to your city or county in a way that didn't affect the bonding or the financial rating of that community. So, that's the high-level view of what this is all about. But you still have to work with your attorney to make sure that it's done right, it's done in the proper way and all of that. So, going back to that specific question about this, you know, they didn't really have to do this special statute in Scottsdale to make that work for that motor mile, that McDowell corridor where all those car dealerships have gone away. But, but in that case, they wanted to be sure that they had control. Remember in the CFD statute, it can be the city council or it can be an appointed board and they wanted to be sure, so this was written, it has to be the board. So, so it takes it out of the city, so the city has no responsibility to even, because a lot of people are saying the city should take responsibility and be the board. This statute takes it out of the hands, so the city, so the city is not the board of the district. I think that's a good thing actually from a liability standpoint. You and I have talked about that before, so that's one.
Has anybody?
No, no, at this point they have not. At this point they have not.
Steve, Flagstaff.
Oh, I see, that's news to me, I did not know.
Flagstaff is using it along with the business improvement district.
Ah, okay.
So, I can get the details on that, but it's very new.
Okay, I knew that Scottsdale didn't do theirs, I knew a couple of other communities had looked at it and haven't done it yet.
Okay, here's the follow-up question.
But the statute is virtually identical.
Let me give you the follow-up question. I know from finance people around the state, some people, both know, that they don't like the RD statute because it's unproven and they don't like the language. So, assuming hypothetically that the council wanted to do everything Mark has proposed.
Do it under the CFD.
Why, why would we do it under the CFD statute that people are just familiar with?
Right, right. And again, I have no dog in hunt, I've not talked to Mark about this, I don't, you could do, everything he's asking for could be done under the CFD statute. You could do the appointed board, you can do the, everything he's asking for is doable, assessment. The difference is that you don't have GO bonding bonds. Well, they're not asking for GO, they're asking for assessment. So, you could, you could, and what some people miss is that what you have to do then is sort of tied down with your development agreement is specifically what it does then is that in the, in the development agreement or in the terms of the general plan of the district, you tie it down. Okay, this, this CFD will have an appointed board and this CFD will only do assessment bonds, will not do GO bonds. So, you do some limitations that basically does the same things they're asking for, but does it under the CFD statute. Ah, I don't, I think that's, that's doable, but, but you know, I've not talked to them about why they chose the new statute instead.
There's a, there's a little bit of King Lear here, Mayor. Steve is the father of the CFD statute. In fact, 20 years ago, I hired him to testify about the CFD statute and how it came about, how he gave birth to it. So, I just, you know, I'm being amused by the fact that he's traumatized away from his child.
Well, he gave birth, it brought me in to have, to sit down and help, help them write the 2010 one. So, even though I was at the time, I was just selling Suncor and, and so I sat down and it works, I don't, I think the bond folks are just saying that just because it has to be used, although maybe, I think you can say, well, I hear if you're going to talk. But other, any other questions? And by the way, in my, as I'm flunking my retirement, I am working on the Governor Ducey transition team and he in fact is working with Governor Walker, by the way. So, and that's, you know, a lot of these ideas have come from that and, and I think one of them is, you know, he's done a great job with State Trust, you know, the corpus that trust has grown dramatically as he was treasurer. I think he is in fact looking at reforming, that's a small sort of thing.
I could bend this a little bit closer to home. There's nothing that our councilman, Mr. Birnbaum, said involving the potential agreement on his, his responsibility to protect the community that you heard, that would, even though you don't have a dog in this fight, Steve, you don't have a problem with them nor do you, Mark? Is that my understanding?
That is correct, Mayor. Just for the town's reference, our bond counsel is Phil Hicks and we've had a long discussion with Phil about this and he's very comfortable with it. So, I know Mr. Birnbaum is concerned about, certain bond counsel in the state have, will probably be considerably more reluctant to pursue this. Phil has no reluctance at all and our bank is Piper Jaffray and we've talked with them about it and they felt very comfortable with it. But we will, you know, spend the time and look at either one of them because it's, the truth that says, our objective is to get this work done in the most responsible way so that we complete this, we service in the line, the town can have quality assets and we can move ahead with our project responsibly.
I think the councilman, Dirk, if you had that question.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The claim is made in the presentation that, I quote, "Other comparable communities will and will not be negatively affected by, negatively affect the marketing of the project." The reference I think is with regards to the assessments on the lots and I guess the implication is we'll still be able to sell these lots after we issue these bonds and encumber ourselves with all this debt. Do you have an analysis that demonstrates that in some meaningful way? If you don't, you'll need it. I think certainly to get my approval. And the other question, question, comment, this town is familiar with the pain of taking on infrastructure and then having to maintain it. This is a question for council. In structuring the agreement, I assume, but I would like to know whether it's true or not, the town will have the opportunity to specifically define certain attributes about the infrastructure, quality attributes, engineering specifics that relate not only to what will be maintained, what we will eventually be maintaining inside the property in question, but the service lines leading up to that, the ability for those lines to service residents outside the subject property. That will all be something we'll have the opportunity to define as requirements as part of this agreement.
Mayor, Councilman Dirk, the answer to your question is yes and to make a further statement to Mr. Staff, spare it me as he leaves, and the cost of engineering work or legal work that is required to assure you of that those standards are adequate is a cost that is often passed contractually onto the developer and the district so that the town doesn't even pay for that work. But the answer to your question is yes, you can specify those requirements for, we'll call them on-project and off-site improvements as well.
Thank you. Counselor McGuire, do you have a question?
I have, I have questions both for councilman and for Mr. Staff. Mr. Birnbaum, is there anything we can and should do to reduce the financial exposure liability of the town in this process?
Well, Mayor, Councilman McGuire, theoretically, there is no direct exposure to the town. You're, the town is not committing to build these improvements. The town is not acting as a lender or financier of the rest resort. The town is not exposing its general fund to any liability and the town is not in any way backing or credit minimums in the box. That's what Vice Mayor Trank was worried about as well. So, once you put in quality standards before you accept the improvements, operating and maintenance funds so that you're sure if and when you accept them, you have both warranty protection and monetary protection, there are many, many things you can do to reduce the town's exposure, but this is not supposed to be a significant exposure matter for the town. You can identify a place where things fall apart and that would be something like the developer is $10 million into the work, bonds are sold, the developer disappears in some financial way and the town feels obligated to see to the completion of improvements not yet completed because there are residents of the town being served by some of these improvements. You can protect yourself, but no more than your ability to assess or propose upon the real estate or the improvements themselves. So, hopefully we'll be able to reduce, if you proceed in this manner, to reduce the exposure to a very, very, very small consideration. That's why community facilities districts exist at all because improvement districts, which have existed for decades, improvement districts do leave the town, ultimately exposed on any bond that is not paid. CFD bonds do not have the town as an obligor at all. So, hopefully you'll be satisfied with the protections and the documents before the council ever asks to hold on anything, if you proceed in this manner.
And I'm sure Mr. Betts is going to serve as well in making sure that the theory and reality indeed come together. Mr. Staff, you know that we have some residents on our west side who have had the frustration of having infrastructure or water going past their residences, they have not been able to tap into that infrastructure. What is the point that you might project when those people might be able to take advantage of that infrastructure to get town water even though they don't live within the copper springs developers?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman McGuire and Councilman Dirk, and I'd like to answer both questions and if I can very quickly, Councilman Dirk. You asked a question about quality control and your town engineer is ultimately the purveyor of that quality standard in accordance with your own statutes and zone requirement specifications. So, these plans are being designed in accordance with the town's requirements and will be approved by the town for construction. So, we have a full permit like we do any other way. And there's inspections along the way as well, I think what Mr. Birnbaum is referring to is probably third-party inspections of those, plan check fees if they need to be done by third-party. All that's normal customary, whatever the town needs in that regard, we're in a position to comply with and happily do so and normally do so. So, we are working and happy, those plans actually are just about done. I'm ready to submit them to the town, pay the fee for plan check fees, which is tens of thousands of dollars, once I know that this is something that we can move forward with. But we've been working with the town engineer in that regard. Mr. McGuire, to answer your question, the, the way that we have looked at constructing this is in, is in phases or stages of work. And one of the first things that we will do, if we are able to do this, and assuming that schedule that I gave to you is correct, and we begin work, we sell the bonds, we begin work and judge the why, the very first thing we're going to do is pressure test the existing line, coordinate it, okay, so that we can begin using, or you can begin using it for service and people can tap into it. We will then construct the remainder of the line, up the hill, the booster pumps, so forth, but that portion of the line will be pressurized and usable probably within the first 60 days. It's there, it's been constructed, the plans and specs, it just hasn't been pressurized and it needs to be quality tested and pressurized before it can be used for domestic purposes.
Thank you for that consideration. Counselor, special question?
I have a question for council. According to the schedule, if things are, you know, keep to the schedule as documented here, sometime in December, they're going to begin starting to selling lots. What happens? We get to December, they, they sell five lots, the town takes over the maintenance, the operations of all the infrastructure and the economy crashes again for another five years. Do the bondholders wait five years to repay until more lots get sold or how, what happens with the process after that?
Mayor, council, this was, in short, no. The bondholders don't wait. There is either pre-funding of the bonds or special assessments or reserve accounts established in the event that that period occurs. And just one other thing, so nobody looks at me in the here. I appreciate the aggressiveness of Mr. Staff's proposed schedule. It is theoretically achievable. That's all.
Well, to my defense with Mr. Birnbaum, we've been at this a long time. We had permits for that work. We have been working with Mark and contracting. We have continually received updated estimates and value engineer that work. We're ready to submit those plans for permit. The contractor knows the work, he knows the job site, he's been there. He's the one who's given us the schedule for work. It's a matter of, is our bond counsel and our bank going to be able to deliver as they told us they can deliver? If they can, I'm quite confident on the physical improvements, we can get that work done in that time period.
I'm actually more concerned getting the subdivision report approved because of sale of lots, but it doesn't matter because I agree with Mr. Staff. It is theoretically possible.
Councilman.
My only question, Mayor, is Mr. Staff has requested that the council instruct staff to facilitate this process. Can we do this? This agenda item is for discussion only.
Discussion only, yes.
But can we direct staff?
I can direct the town manager to go with Mr. Staff and begin discussion.
And Mayor, Councilman McGuire, your legal counsel and manager and your planning staff have already met with the developer and their consultants for at least one extended meeting in preparation for what brings us here today. So, unless the staff is told not to proceed, they'll keep talking pending your next official action.
Okay, so this, there's no other political hurdle here to keep going?
No.
Okay.
And there's no formal resolution.
No other questions, I was going to go to a public comment.
Terry Smith.
Again, council is taking no action over this.
Terry Smith, 398-25 North 26th Street, Mayor Council. You've heard me talk about this matter before. I would like to pull up a little bit more history because I've got three minutes and that is that we have been delayed, delayed, delayed. Jennifer has told us, you know, there's no way we can do it unless we get that. This many people will sign up, the water lines that are there right now are open and have been for years for this town to just accept them. town to just accept them. They're already built to standards. There is a section that we've been talking about that's not part of this project, that the town has held us up from water for $20,000 for all these years. $20,000, they could have put that in, they could have had the lines pressurized, they could have had it chlorinated, we could have had water years ago. We have been told the town doesn't have the money, the town missed, the town had. We've been told that, you know, the developer's gonna have to do this, but the fact is, the lines are in, everything has been done, that the town just needs to accept it. Right now, the town is saying, okay, we want the developer to pay this $20,000 and improve this one little section of line. That's fine. This is gonna take some time, it's gonna take more time. I would like to see, if this discussion, and I think our town owes it to us, to put up the $20,000 and then go to Mr. Stafford and the development and say, I'd like to be reimbursed for this so we can provide water to our residents. And it doesn't really have anything to do with Cohava Springs. It's been the town dragging his feet all this time. And like you said, and I think Mr. Stafford will back it up, that, there's a line that is too small, and then it goes big again, they say that has to be increased in size. That was not part of the Cohava Ranch or Cohava Springs development. That is something that really is the town's responsibility. And we are being put on hold again, saying, oh, well, we gotta wait and see if we can get this thing approved. I say, you know, I would love to see it approved, get done and start tomorrow. And what's gonna happen here is you're gonna get down and you're gonna say, well, Cohava Springs is gonna do it, and then they're gonna get down there and there's gonna be a delay because of the bonding, because of the agreement worked out between town staff, and it's gonna be three months, and just like Mr. Bernbaum says, it's theoretically possible, it's theoretically also possible, we're gonna be sitting here for another year, if the town doesn't pay out $20,000 and give us some water. So I'd just like to see if we can move on as fast as we can. I would like to see the town step up and put up $20,000. If you spend more than that painting the curb, okay, and here you have, I don't know how many residents up there, our wells are down, we don't have water, we're hauling water in. So I'd like to see some action. Thank you.
Terry Smith?
I sympathize with my fellow Smith, and think that the decision should address his water and the other community members' water issues. But I'm really very concerned about the proposed timeline for this project. It seems to me, I thought I heard earlier in this meeting, concerns about the capacity of the engineering staff, and the staff was overworked in many dimensions, and we need to add to the staff, at least with respect to water-related issues. Now we're suggesting that we need to accelerate the staff's input in the design of infrastructure, which surely has water components to it in order to meet the schedule. When I ride around North Phoenix and Cave Creek, I see an enormous number of sales lots. I don't see them changing very much. More get added, very few get taken down. The mechanism for this plan requires, as Councilman Dirk suggested, a very careful market analysis. I don't know anything about water infrastructure, but I do know something about markets, okay? And I do know something about real estate markets. And if this is gonna be financed on the prospect of selling a large number of lots at prices that reflect significant uncertain bonds, then it requires a careful market analysis. Why? Abandoned properties with terrific infrastructure have negative effects on adjoining lots and on the community as a whole. So you may have the best infrastructure in the world and abandoned community, but you can't sell off the properties. You then have to deal with the financial problems associated with the bonds. Performance bonds, I also know, I'm already a bit about them. Performance bonds can be designed in a variety of different ways, and to assure completion of the project and to secure the maintenance funds associated with maintaining the infrastructure until it is built out should require a secure bond, not a cash reserve held by a third-party. Absolutely. If that is not a part of the plan, this is not a plan. Thank you.
Public comment is still up.
I have a number of questions. Some of them have already been discussed, compared to Mr. Bernbaum and the last staff. A reserve is certainly required. Water requires the town to have reserves on its bonds, on its bonds. Certainly, this would require some type of reserve as well, maintenance as well. Also, I think it's gonna be interesting when people pay off these bonds, that for each one of the 230 lots, it's going to cost approximately $5,000 a year to pay off these bonds over a 30-year period. The town appoints the first board. Why? Why does the town appoint the first board? It says the town's responsible for performance of the following. Appointment of the first board. I don't know. There may be a reason for it, but I can't think of one. Mayor, Mr. Smith, I believe that is a specific provision of the revitalization statute. That's how you get a first board. Now I know, now I know. Let's see. The town takes over the responsibility for the infrastructure upon the payoff of the We talked about maintenance before that. I think that if the town has a viable maintenance program, there should be a requirement that Cohava Springs utilize the same maintenance program, similar software, and all sorts of stuff like that, so that when the town does take it over, some 30 years from now, it will be seamless. Fees. Who pays for the water? There's nothing in here about who pays for water usage. There's the town bill, this separate political subdivision, the people who are in it for the water that they get. Mr. Jan Kostya shaking his head, I assume that that's a given.
We go and use it correctly.
Okay. But it's not in this, it doesn't explain that. Capacity fees, I don't know whether capacity fees have already been paid, or whether capacity fees would be paid for each unit, or whether there would be in lieu fees for the town to provide water to Cohava Springs, especially since parts of the existing capacity fees are based upon the costs of the infrastructure that the town has that will supply that Let's see. Separate political subdivision, I assume, I'm assuming this, that that means only for the purposes of the water district, that it's not a true separate political division with its own voting rights, with its construction tax money, and all sorts of other things going to it versus the town. I hope that that's the case. Okay, here's up my time. Thank you.
There's anyone else wish to comment? I thought you were still the last.
You probably wish I was.
I don't think you're very likely.
I'm Mr. Jay Smith. And I'm not a resident of the town anymore, I'm a resident of Alaska. The funding for the utilities and stuff, or whatever we're talking about right now, sounds fine to me. And I'm all, I mean, if I was a developer, I'd probably use that same route to get some money. But I know they've put out a lot of money in the past. If you've ever driven down Saddle Mountain Road or 32nd Street, you wouldn't want it in your neighborhood. I mean, if they're gonna landscape the road, I'm all for it. I mean, it was the most beautiful sunset we've ever had tonight in Cave Creek. And if you lived on Saddle Mountain Road, you'd be ashamed. So I think the town needs to do something about our neighborhood, it's not yours. But the development, I think we're concerned with the development, it's gonna come someday, but I'd rather have it later than sooner, personally. 2,000 trips a day up my road, 26th Street, and if you've ever driven on that road, there's a few potholes still. And I think the town needs a better maintenance program than that. But the water line is there, there's fire hydrants, $20,000 is not too much to ask. You give that much to the, you know, the events in town, to have rodeos and whatever, I'm not a horse person, but that's the way it is. And I do believe that the project will get finished someday. Hopefully, we still have access through there to the state land and stuff like that. And I hope the council in the future considers all that still. I don't know, I've been out of the circulation for a long time, so I don't know what's going on with the new plan or whatever, personally, so. Other than that, I do hope you guys consider, if you would like 2,000 cars going by your house a day, if you vote on anything. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
My name is Gary Becker. I changed my name to Smith. It's probably good a little bit for recognition. I live on 2420 East Desert Hills Drive. I own a property there, and it's a business. Like Terry Smith had mentioned, we've been waiting a long time for water. And it's gotten to a point right now where, as Terry had mentioned, and I can confirm that, our wells are doing well, and we're having a difficult time with water. I've talked with many of my neighbors, and they feel that the town really needs to move ahead with this. You know, I feel that way. We are citizens of Cave Creek, and we don't wanna be secondary citizens in Cave Creek. We wanna have the same kinds of services that our other, other neighbors have, you know, elsewhere. So I would encourage the township here to look at it very seriously. And again, we've been waiting a long, a long time, a lot of years. I owned this property now for six years, and I know we first started talking about this six years ago. And we're still sitting here today talking about it. So I would encourage and plead with the township here to move ahead with this project, and give us some water. It's desperately needed. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to comment? Okay, I need to move the agenda along here. Council's gonna take a minute to comment. Mr. Jay Smith?
Yeah.
Welcome back, it's been a while since we've talked.
Thank you.
And other things. There will, I believe, be access through the Maricopa Trail. There are trails that lead essentially through the Cohava Springs development, both going into the county park, the regional park, and also going up toward state land. And Mr. Stafford may be able to confirm that.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. McGuire, this plan has not changed. We've already gifted the town about three and a half miles of trails. They exist today, that's not changing, and to the county, I should say, both the town and the county. So those public trails are there, they're not gonna be moved or changed, so. In fact, we intend to add to them as we continue with development.
Council's gonna take a five-minute recess after this. Two directives by town manager. One, let's continue the discussions with Mr. Stafford, of course, you're gonna pull Mr. Bernbaum and/or the firm into those discussions. And secondly, have the appropriate member from staff go out the Saddle Mountain Road and look at the water line that Mr. Smith and Mr. Smith and Mr. Smith. And let's get a number, let's not guess it's 20,000 or 30,000 or 10,000 or whatever. So council can be briefed on what are the actual costs to get that line up. Council's gonna take a five-minute recess.